I started starting a few minutes late. And I just was on the phone with Director DePass and she is in transit, so she will be a few minutes, a few minutes late, probably about 10 minutes late. And just to, let's see, we should go around the inductions, the table, let's start with the committee members.
Director Amy Lowry.
Julia Edwards.
Oh. Student Representative to the Board.
Jackson Hines.
Herman Green.
Great, and I'm going to ask Lynn's staff, just to make it easier for people watching afterwards, that when ever staff speak, just introduce yourself the first time, and that way we have that done. So we have a number of items on the agenda today, and I'm going to change the order just a little bit, so that Director DePass can prepare us for two pieces of a discussion that are important. And that is the, a new policy, a new set of amendments to the student representative policy, student representative and district city council policy, and also the climate crisis response policy. And so hopefully she'll join us for that time. But I thought we'd first start, if it's okay, I'm not sure which one it's going to be. But with the, we have, staff asked us to consider some fairly minor amendments to the workplace harassment policy, which is in everybody's pockets.
I can take that one.
Okay.
So this is in response to, one was retouched from HR, and the second is with a legislative change that requires us to amend our discrimination policy to include gender identity. So we've included gender identity in the workplace harassment, as well as broadened the definition of workplace harassment to allow for, for the protection of all employees, and not just on the basis of, um...
It's got some bullying components to it.
Yeah, exactly.
Not quite encompassed in every application.
And so those are the changes that we have made. It's all in the second paragraph, second.
So a question I had, that I know I asked in advance, but I think it's worth asking because it didn't make sense to me when I read through the changes. So just for the explanation for the broader public is that I was curious because it essentially said that all district employees, school board members, volunteers, and contractors must avoid any contact or actions which could be characterized as harassment of another employee. And so only the recipient of the harassment that's protected was only the employee. And I was wondering, like, even though there was a category of volunteers and employees, and school board members, and contractors, that it only applied to employees. So maybe you could share why in this policy it only says employees? Like, it's not okay to harass contractors, volunteers?
It's not okay to harass anybody else.
That's unclear. But I mean, it looks like it's just employees, so...
Well, this one, so the workplace harassment policy came out of legislation that was addressing specifically employment, employment, and that. And so that is why this particular policy was developed. We have another policy, and it is our broader non-district head harassment, non-discrimination policy, which is 1.800201.
Yes.
I am right.
I was just saying, it's like, are you a jury? And make something up.
I know. So, which addresses harassment, discrimination in general, either. So if you come onto a PBS site and experience it, there is a mechanism for you to report it, for us to, you know, take actions, because that's, we do not want to see that.
And so this is just specific, this policy change is specific to the boys.
Correct.
Do the committee members have any questions?
I think this is great, thank you for catching on, Harry.
Making this better.
Would committee members entertain a recommendation to move this out of committee with a recommendation to the board for a first reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, great, so move that along. Then we have two policies that are almost for rescission. And they are policy 1.10, 0.020 definitions, and then 2.40, 0.010 teacher membership for committee.
I have to address them briefly. The definitions policy, as a standalone document, defines terms that are intuitive, but it doesn't add a lot of value. And we don't think there's a lot of confusion about what CPS means for school district members. So again, as we try to reduce the volume of policies in the manual, so valuable information doesn't get lost by, that's not all that helpful. We thought this was a policy that could be genoculated. The second one, teacher membership on committees, isn't really a policy. It's a segment, sort of a commentary. And we just felt that that was also not high value at all in terms of guidance to them to us.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee members?
I just really appreciate this work of cleaning up our, I know it takes time to go through and look at everything and evaluate it, but I think this helps us to be better. Again, so thank you, staff, for this work.
Director Green?
No.
Okay. Would the, can maybe be willing to entertain a recommendation to move this to the full board for a first reading for rescission?
Yes.
Ask for that, yes.
Okay. And I'm going to ask for the, I think I moved next to the student representative and district student council policy. And just as a frame up, this is another policy that staff asked us to take a look at and recommend some changes to. It is, there are some conflicts between the provisions relating to the student representative in this policy, and with, and in the policy relating to the Board of Education, which also talks about the student representative. And the reason why we're bringing it forward, and because people have only got it yesterday, then there won't be a vote on it. But the reason why we want to move this particular item is that the provisions that are being suggested for revision relate to the election and removal of the student rep. And it's always, in terms of election, to have those decisions being made not in the context from your midst of an election. And so we'd like to move these earlier, so when the elections come out this spring, that we will have removed the inconsistencies in the needs or inclusivity language. And so that's why it's being brought to us now. Again, also supply of staff is something that we really want to have made more consistent. So with that, Liz, do you want to walk through the specific recommended change, the changes to the document?
Redline by redline, or is it conceptual?
Why don't we, why don't we do, like, at least the high points?
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy to do it.
And then, why don't you, then we'll have a discussion, and especially one that students, and again, we're not voting on this meeting as a recommendation out, so it's a time for us to discuss and take questions and answer them.
Super, thank you, Juliette. So that, I think the first problem, inconsistency we're trying to address is the distinction that the existing policy makes between those who are appointed to the district student council, those who are elected. The reality is, while most schools have, high schools have an election process to establish their representative to the district student council, some do not. Sometimes there's a change that's needed, and there's unexpected circumstantial cases. So what was, like, happened in the existing language, what happens is that there are some rights that don't go through those who happen to be appointed instead of elected. This takes away that distinction. Once you're on the student council, you are, regardless of your path. It also sets expectations that there is consistent notice to students in a school about how to get on the district student council, and that when someone is elected or appointed, however they ascend to that position, will the school administration notify DSC staff liaisons, as well as the board office. So it just kind of tightens it. It tries to make sure that you have notice and access to this. We're trying to find ways to open up this service opportunity, this learning opportunity. The, there's a, there's a small change about the bylaws, that they clarify that they can't be in conflict with the policy or AD. The bylaws are developed by the district student council, but then they have to be approved by the board, the part of the governing documents of the council that was created by them.
And the main, the other thing it does is, it aligns with the board policy considering who can be a student rep. Which was one of the areas of confusion, that the board policy said about 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, and the student rep policy said 12th graders?
Yeah.
And so we're, so you had two policies that said two different things. So this is aligning with the board policy that has the, that has the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade possibility, so not just open to seniors.
And it makes clear that if there is any conflict with the other policy, the board's policy, that the district student council policy, that was recently amended, is the one that we control.
I know that this was a policy that we looked at last year, and had been talking about, and I really, you know, trying to find ways to clear about elections, and every school does things kind of differently, and making sure. And I think this does a good job of clearing up some of those, not all of the things we had talked about, with some of the stuff last year, with bylaws and other pieces, but I think this really helps with that election.
And I want to give Jackson a lot of credit for thoughtfully weighing in, and we were, the task we were given was to stay narrow towards the elections. There are, you know, last year, there were other
Other things, but...
Things that were before the policy committee, but this is about getting the elect kind of stuff in order before the student season starts.
And I appreciate some of the things, like, making sure that this is the dominant policy, and making that clear. And I really see, again, the work that's gone into this, Jackson. I really appreciate the DSC and all of you working with staff to improve this policy.
Any questions?
Um, no, this is really good, so no problems.
One of the things we're trying to do is balance the, because not all schools do things the same, and that this is trying to, like, hold each school, like, respect each school's process, and yet make it open and transparent about what the process is at the briefest number. I think also some of the, a couple of the other smaller changes. I'll say in 2017, 18, or 18, 19, working with Moses Tran, who was the student rep at the time, it was this, the district student council was really his vision to engage more students in the work, so it wasn't just the student rep. And, you know, the time, that policy took almost a year and a half, so it went on to Nick, the next student rep. And there are just some things that, like, we didn't anticipate. And so in some ways, there's some things, like, this is, I think, I cleaned up. It's like, yeah, if I'd known X at the time, I would have, like, maybe drafted it differently, but you don't know X. And so I think we have, like, a couple cycles under our belt, and it's a better, you know, great foundation that Moses and Nick set. And then this is the next.
Well, and that's still the work of this policy committee, right? That it's often looking at policies that when they were written, were written in the best way they could be, and then we know different things. And so we, we could resize or amend to sort of move what we know now.
I have nothing to say for this, this is fantastic. I like the, the more we can get students involved, the better, I think, I think we can get some.
Great, so everybody understands the process. I'm taking the action now, we'll, materials. I would ask that this be shared with the DSC, or you all socialize with others, and that we have our next committee meeting December 15, and that we'll take action on it. But certainly, if people have comments or questions in the meantime, to share them. It seems like the committee will want to move this next committee meeting, and then we'll be on, we'll be on a process by which we will meet the deadline of having this in place, so we have a, an election process that is transparent and understood by everyone. We're going to be ahead of the US government. Hopefully. All right. So Director DePass is not there yet. But I think I'm going to jump into the climate policy, and there's going to be a setup here. A setup of, just framing it up. I spent about four hours last night rewatching the last committee meeting, and going through all various documents. And for those who've been on the policy committee, so Director Lowry, we had a policy that was traveling along. I think you've been, Director Lowry, you declared a date that it was coming out of committee.
Well, I was trying to help us have some forward motion.
Yeah, no. It was, I appreciate it. And, you know, I think this is the maximum of, like, get it right versus hurry. We're in that moment, so I really appreciate, so we had a, we had some, we had some community engagement, both that was done by the district staff. We also had community input during the fall. We had a draft that reflected that, and, you know, I'll just say, as the committee chair, it was the draft that was handed us primarily from the previous committee. And so we then had, you know, thanks to Erin coordinating a lot of staff input and analysis of, I think, a pretty bold and sweeping policy. We had some staff recommendations around specific rulings and policies. And that's how we left, two meetings ago, we left of, well, people have some assignments. I'll note twice that Ailey was headed in on time. Yes, I know, that supports you. And
That's my word, that supports me.
And at the last meeting, we went through, there is a document that is the, it's, well, now it's been updated. It's November 6, climate crisis response policy staff inputs, unimproposals, which really coordinated all of the staff input on the version 24 of policy.
26.
26. And we went through, we went through that, and as I was talking to Dan this morning, most of the items here, we, where staff made some recommendations, we changed the language, we also added some, asked for some definitions, some people had some assignments. And based on that, there is, there was posted a new version, a new version 25. And the version 25 includes, so we had a long discussion about, for example, about the 2040 targets, and staff felt really strongly that there needed to be some qualifiers in there because it wasn't realistic, and we need to add some things in. So the new version 25 that was posted has those, has that staff language, if you look at it. So as a footnote, and I would recommend we move it into the policy. It also integrates and it adds a glossary with definitions, like scope 1, scope 2, and 3, and feasible frontline communities and such things. So thank you to everyone who participated in those discussions and made those changes. I'll just note, Director DePass noted that we're using consistency in the document itself, including frontline and communities and color of how we talk about it. So I wanted just, the next version, we need to incorporate for feedback around that, because they are on the definitions, but it's actually not actually the policy.
So Juliette, does the version 25 that we have now, does it incorporate all of the staff recommendations that you've received a month ago?
I'm not even there. No, it doesn't. So in the, in the, between the last two meetings, I had a conversation with Lute and staff, and there was like, well, we actually like to put some of these things in administrative directive or an implementation plan. And so that is, there's a version of it, which is version 24, that has red, blue, and green. And the green is the, what would stay in the existing policy. And then the blue was in to say, move from policy to AD and/or implementation plan, and the red was remove altogether. And again, because I wasn't the chair last time, I don't have quite an authorship, but I do know there was some community authorship, and it's a pretty substantial set of proposed changes. And
I think that we have had sort of a policy that the committee had been working on, and then with the change in the committee, some things came back in that the committee had sort of already removed and had put into the AD by. So I feel like there's been
But not, not that many. I mean, it's a pretty substantial change. So I'm trying to honor what I've been wrestling with, as I just corrected, so if you hear wrong, it's like trying to honor, like, both the work that happened to date, and also some staff recommendations. And I think there's some questions that we need to work through, because, like, for example, in my conversation this morning with Dan, we talked specifically about Oh, I can't find it now, the pesticide one. Harry, do you have that right off the top of your? Uh, no?
Are you looking for the policy or the reference?
The reference, the reference to it.
Is under goal 1.3 number 6.
I'm sorry, which one is it?
Sorry, under goal 1.3 number 6, in version 25.
Okay.
Phase out the use of pesticides and pesticides replacement.
Thank you. Are you looking for the policy? I'll let him get to that. So for example, I'm like, well, that, I'm thinking, okay, that, to me, if it goes somewhere else, I'm fine with it, because we currently have another policy, 3.30.082, it's environmentally sustainable business practices, which has, they're pretty thorough, like, actually a much more descriptive set of practices around pesticide management. And this was a huge, PBS used to just dump lots of pesticides on all our, you know, get rid of dandelions and everything. And this policy is what basically fundamentally changed what our, our, the first grass looks like now. There's lots of things growing besides just grass, but that's okay. And so, like, for example, when I look through the, here, when I look through this policy, there are some things in here that staff has recommended, like, we move to an AD or eliminate, that actually are in another policy. And so one of the things that I thought would be, I'd like to get committee members empath on, is there's like two, there's two concepts here. The big concept in this policy is setting a climate target and getting to carbon reduction. And there's a host of sustainable business practices in here, too. And some of them actually do, could help PBS get to a more, you know, net zero carbon emissions. And other ones are good practices, good sustainable practices. So a question I had for the committee philosophically is, do we want this to be about a specific carbon policy and have some of these other things live? And I think some of the languages actually, I mean, there's got some procurement and other things already in, in this other policy. What, Michelle?
Yes. Hi, yes.
Hello.
Hi, I'm sorry, hi. I'm sorry, I'm in a car, so it might be coming in and out a little bit. But I did wanted to say that, I want to say that one of the, one of my impressions when I was reading through the staff recommendations is that there's this concept called low-hanging fruit, that, you know, all of these have budget implications, but some of them less so. And so if we could kind of use that sustainability practice of identifying, you know, what you can do first, what's on first, and easier, maybe not as much budget impact. And the other thing is, I wanted to, I think you were saying that there's like a climate, a carbon, a climate policy, and there's also sustainability practices. And just to be mindful, that those are sometimes one and the same, and sometimes they're separate operations or actions.
Yeah. Well, that's what, when I went back through the policy, it seemed like they're already, some of these things are already covered in our 3.30.082. And so, I gotta say, this, this, the frame up of 3.30.080 is And so, I gotta say, this, this, the, the frame up of 3.30.080 is about hitting this a very specific goal. And it does provide staff flexibility, I think, Director DePass to your point about going after low hanging fruit for, to be able to prioritize. And so I'm interested in the committee's thinking about these, like the two policies and whether it's a, this is primarily focused on the goal and the other practices that aren't necessarily related to climate or the goal within this document. And, and many of them are actually already here.
So I, my sort of, as committee member, my philosophy is really based around some of what we learned with AJ Cravill, sort of some of the language he had around policy development and the idea of containers and that your policy is your root goal and you want it to be less specific and more about those big ideas, right? And so I think part of what we're seeing with some of the rescissions we're doing are policies that were maybe smaller, but really were more like when we just removed about committees. And so I would be in favor of actually the simpler and bigger idea the policy is, the better. And that then those really specific things about pesticide use, about recycling containers, about capricious stuff, those things to me fit in an AD. They're the operational way, they're the way that the district is implementing the vision that's in the policy. And I think when we start to put lots of really detailed things in policy is when we begin to become out of compliance with our policies. And that it's really important to be very, very clear and transparent in what you said, those goals of carbon reduction. I think a really, another important goal that's in this policy is around students and student collaboration, student learning and student leadership within climate justice. So, you know, if I, if I was gonna sort of write the policy in three sentences, it would be get our emissions down, partner with frontline communities, elevate student leadership and student education on these matters. And, you know, sustainable business practices that don't strip the planet any more than we already have. That's not the policy. And then those other pieces to be, because as we learn more and as technology develops, as things change, we're gonna wanna be able to be nimble and responsive in our AD to, to meet those changes so we can hit our carbon emissions. So that's sort of my philosophical way of understanding like the role of policy development and how that interacts with ADs and policies.
Yeah, so one of the buckets you just described was environmental sustainable business practices. So we, and I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but we, we have one. That does, I think, use still high level language and actually hits some of the other pieces that are in here.
And maybe they don't need to be in the policy if they're in that other, right? I mean, that could be.
That was my original like thing about pesticides is like, you know, I, I do think it's a value, like Portland said 20 years ago, we are getting rid of pesticides, like ones that are damaging to young people and because they're all over our grass and everything. And this policy basically dropped the amount of pesticides used at PBS dramatically.
Because I think one of the things that happens is like, okay, let's say we, we do this climate justice policy and in 10 years we change the climate justice policy, but it's got stuff about pesticides in it, but we, the, the board in the future doesn't know or doesn't remember about the sustainable business practices policy or they, you know, they don't change it. So then we have two policies that are in conflict, which we also often have. So I'm also simplifying, if it's covered somewhere else, refer to it in the policy so that if we wanna make changes, we can do that other places.
So I think maybe there's some alignment. And I'm just like, this is abroad because I say, I've been trying.
That's a conceptual piece.
How to, like, how to tackle like all these issues and.
Reverend Green, what are you thinking over there?
As I'm sitting here looking at it, a policy, as you were saying, a policy is the big picture, right? But when we start getting down into the, into the, into the details of it, we have to be intentional about why it's even there to get it. And where do we, where do we place it? But outside of that, I'm not really thinking too much. I, I want us to, I want us to look at it, I want us to be intentional about what we're looking at it and about where, where we put it. I don't wanna take stuff out or leave stuff in for the sake of taking it out or leaving it in. I don't wanna take it out because it's, it's hard or it might make it harder. I don't want that to be the reason that we take it out. And I don't wanna take it out because it's like, well, well, I, I wanna be, I wanna be vague because anything that's too vague, it can't be done. And so I believe there has to be a level of intentionality around, around the policy. But we, we have to also be looking at like, why, why, why are we having this conversation? Why, why is this important and why are we pushing back against it or why are we fighting for it? Like, what makes this so important right now?
And for me, the more detailed we get the policy, the less enforceable it gets sometimes depending on what it is and.
Well, it can tie our hands.
Exactly.
It can, it can, it can tie our hands.
So innovations happen.
Director, remember, in, in the materials, there's also a short staff summary just saying the rationale behind the proposed change. And I've got a short presentation, if it's helpful, I can kind of walk through it so people just could kind of see what that rationale is, like just a few minutes, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I first wanted to get the students' point of view on some of this, the concept of the climate reduction, the targets and this other policy. And I apologize if this wasn't, the policy wasn't posted, but to get your, your thinking about.
Um, I, so I do a lot of work with environmental groups. I think one of the main focuses is if you sometimes get caught up in trying to attack, because climate change is multifaceted. So I don't want us to get, you know, caught up in several different things because there are hundreds of different factors in our society. And I think we usually do is stick to what is most impactful to what is current in our community and what is most impactful of how to help.
Yeah, I actually agree with what everyone said. My one concern or hesitation is just as we become less specifically accountable, insurance that we could possibly have, start waiting. So enforcement is easier because there's less.
I, I think if you're gonna be clear, I don't want us to lose any of the enforcement pieces. I just think the appropriate approach for those is in an AD. And it's the difference between the, the big vision of the policy and the implementation. And I, and as a board, we wanna hold the district accountable in the implementation to reach our goals and that that language should be really clear and spelled out, right? Because that was a very real concern.
So, but accountability would not be in the AD because that's like self accountability? I mean, so that normally you would build that into the, and so maybe one of the things to do is look at that, you know, are we okay, but there's a, there's the end of the policy now, the nine person, or up to nine person group. And is that, is that the accountability mechanism? But I, I would don't think that in, traditionally you put like an accountability in the AD because it's like, it'd be more in the policy as that's how the board's gonna provide some oversight.
Well, I do think, I mean, Ailey, I totally agree with you from a good governance standpoint that we've been trying to do a lot of work to improve our policies and our policymaking so A, they don't become immediately obsolete or not adhered to because the level of specificity is burdensome when conditions change. I mean, the point of policies is to articulate our values and our ideals. And so we're doing a lot of work with all of these rescissions. It's largely because they've become, a lot of, with a lot of them, it's because they've become obsolete because of a level of specificity that doesn't fit to the current conditions. So that's exactly what we're trying to avoid in our policymaking generally. So I would hate to see us kind of step into those traps again and just get right about good governance.
I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you. And welcome Director Hunsen, joining us today. So for, for example, like I was trying to just sort of rationalize, to me, this stood out as like high level, this seems like high level policy interaction values, like support development of youth leadership and inclusion opportunities around climate solutions, create meaningful opportunities by, by process to shape development and implementation plan of related programs. To me, those, especially the first one, seemed really high level and student focused. But for example, staff is suggesting moving that to the AD or the implementation plan, which to me, it, it seems that, so I think there's also a conversation like, what, what triggers something like this shouldn't be in the policy or it's, it's, it's too high level or it's, I'm sorry, it's too detailed. But to, so some of them I, to me, seemed high level and directional and like, you know, are we gonna change our minds in 10 years that, you know, there should be development of youth leadership and engagement opportunities around climate solutions? Probably not. And there could be some other things that like, yeah, we might have a totally different view.
Yeah, Director Scott texted me, you know, electric vehicles are a big thing now, but in five years they may not be. But how do we, you know, make sure we're, we're up on the latest sort of best practices for climate?
So what are we really debating here? I mean, we're having kind of a philosophical discussion about whether we want many details in the policy itself, but what are we really trying to resolve in this moment?
Well, we're, I'm trying to come to a consistent approach because after seven months, we got a whole new approach and a new set of feedbacks. So I'm trying to both honor the previous committee's work and community input we got and have a discussion. So, and then I, and also get some clarity. So for example, when I looked at this, so when I'm moving the policy today, so the, the point is to have a.
Conversation about it.
Conversation about it. And so when I, when I looked at the recommendations of moving things to the AD or, or the implementation plan, it was like, oh, well, if it says it's gonna move to the AD, I'm okay with it not having it here. And then in my discussion with Dan, it was like, well, it may not be in the AD. And it's like, okay, well, then am I okay with that? And so I think getting a better sense from staff and ultimately, and I don't know what the board basically has something, has something else today, but getting a sense of, you know, I, I think we should just be crystal clear with people in, everybody who's interested in climate and the policy, that if we say, yeah, we're taking this out because it's gonna be in the AD, we have to be really careful if like, if that's not gonna actually happen because, I mean, it's not fair to staff, first of all, for us to then six months later.
And it undermines our public trust too.
Like that's not. Right. So when I read it, it was like, oh, well, if all these things are going into AD, you know, some of them I could say yes, and some of them like, no, I actually think there's still policy. But then it wasn't really clear like whether something would be in the AD. And so I think that warrants a, another additional conversation about that. And.
Is it confirmed that a staff, I mean, if the superintendent and staff say it's gonna be in the AD, do you not have that?
No, if that's the case. But when I talked to Dan this morning, he said, well, we're gonna do the, the scoping exercise and then, and so we have a sample AD and I was like, oh, the sample AD, is that like the AD that will just travel along? It's like, well, it may not, may or may not. And, and so this is like all in a, a good faith discussion about what is, and trying to get to clarity with the, with, with all of us, like what does it mean? Because.
The thing we have to be careful about is the AD or the interpermeable security.
Exactly.
So the board can't actually say what needs to be in there, but I think then that goes to the relationship between the board and the superintendent. Do we, do we trust when we say this is gonna come out and when, but if the staff say it's gonna be in the AD?
So you're, you're absolutely right. And like I say, also, because I read it very specifically like, oh, it's gonna be there. And then I'm like, well, maybe, will it not be after we do the scoping exercise? And then I'm thinking, okay.
So if it's not there, then it's something else, like it's something else there that meets that same need?
Well, I think this needs like additional, Dan, do you wanna say something?
I, I got, it's, it's pretty short, like presentations, if they kind of walk through and I'll make it faster to work, but if I can just present them, walk through real quick, I think it'll help answer some of the questions about what the rationale is because, you know, certainly the policy isn't being applied at the apple and even the AD, it's not too dense. It's, it's a continuation of efforts and planning and data analysis and baselining. So what, what kind of big picture staff recommendation is, everything in here is good stuff. We're not saying that, you know, we shouldn't do any of this over the long term. It's where in the process or what's that right deliverable where this level of detail belongs and what information do we still need to gather to be able to write it? And so if I could just do real quick.
Yeah, why don't you do that? Actually, Dan, before you do that, I forgot about Director DePass and I want her, if she has any comment you wanna make, Director DePass, about any of the topics that we asked the committee members to speak to?
I apologize, I'm, I don't know if you can hear me, I'm just now getting settled in to a wifi connection and so I'm listening in. I don't necessarily have anything to add at this, at this, at this point.
Okay.
I, I did, I did, I did really like what Director Lowry said about, you know, keeping the, the policy high level because, you know, green, green building, building code's gonna change and, you know, vehicle technology is changing rapidly and so is solar right now. These are, you know, these are things that are rapidly evolving and so I think we wanna, I, I agree that we wanna keep the policy high level and let the, the, the details live in the ADs.
Go ahead. Thank you, Director DePass. Go ahead, Dan.
All right, I wanna try and make this work first. Okay, I'm gonna run through this pretty quick again. I think we've covered a lot of it already, just in an organic discussion. So the intent is of, of the staff recommendation that was off of version 24, so it's not, is really to align the level of detail with that document and then who is the appropriate responsible party. And the, the climate crisis policy, you know, has multiple deliverables, ostensibly the policy administrative directive and then implementation.
Okay, so this is bothering me. So if it has, if it says level of detail high, then it says low detailed. So does that mean?
So think of like policies like a, is high level.
But it's not a high level of detail. It's a high level, but not a high level of detail. The medium level of detail and a, a low level of detail is actually a high level of detail.
Maybe I'll make more sense in a minute. So the colors help, I don't know.
The colors help, but I, yeah, I know the colors help. Thank you.
So.
It's a high level policy, it's just not detailed. Okay, I got, I got.
So there we go. I think that's what I was going for. And so just to spend a real quick minute on these deliverables. So the policy, of course, you know, we're familiar with the policy is and the value of it that it, you know, provides direction district wide, such as you wanna reduce greenhouse gas emissions, we want to invest in the highest investments that are return on investment that will lower those emissions. It also sets district goals, goals becoming carbon neutral by 2040, and it directs staff to proceed with our greenhouse gas analysis, the scope one, the scope two plus. So that greenhouse gas analysis is, is the next step in the process. And what that does is that provides this baseline data that we will then use to establish this mid-range, medium somewhere in there, goals, kind of these shorter term targets that isn't just looking at 20 years or more. And then we have the administrative directive, which provides structure, clarifies roles, and then the implementation plan, which is that those detailed goals, specific milestones, specific paths aligns funding with efforts. And this is the living document, this is the thing that is, that is continually, continually updated. And then of course, we have regular progress reporting, the policy, you know, creates an accountability committee that is board appointed and reports to the board. So this is just a sample schedule that, that just tries to illustrate, you know, we're at the early stages of this. These other efforts, these are the deliverables. These other efforts, these are the deliverables need to be developed, uh, really before the implementation kicks off in earnest. We need that baseline data and understanding of how we're operating now. And of course, uh, it also just tries to highlight, um, you know, we're going to have this continual implementations, continual reporting. And the board has roles here. Uh, resources, resources are going to be needed to implement these plans. Uh, that's going to come through many forms, but some of them are the general fund budgeting process and general obligations bonds as well. So, picking up steam, uh, we can kind of think of this in a three-step process. So step one is the policy, four-step process. That is, that is fair. And the step one, the policy informs the carbon out of the greenhouse gas emissions analysis. That in turn informs and prioritizes the administrative directive. Now starts identifying specific responsibilities by department and identifying the strategies. What are those high return on investment activities that the district should pursue to reduce carbon as quickly as possible? And then those also inform these detailed implementation plans, specifically what are you going to be doing? What are your short-term steps? Who's responsible for those? Uh, so that's the, the process that we see that probably just isn't visible to everyone. They're reading policy, they don't, they don't always think about those future steps. Uh, and probably could have done a better job of communicating that along the way. What staff, when we were reviewing, you know, some of the recent uh versions of the policy, we saw some things that, you know, we really liked in there. It provides direction, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It, it provides um prioritization to go after those highest strategies that reduce emissions the greatest amount. And it provides those goals, carbon neutrality by 2040, there's other goals in there too, but you know, kind of the higher level goals. What our concern was potentially is that, does the policy uh contradict itself a little bit? I say, go after uh the highest return on investment and then has a list of strategies that may or may not be those high level investments. So when we do this, the, the board-appointed committee meets quarterly and looks at the policy and is reporting to the board. Does that become confusion? Is it so ambiguous, it's unclear, should you just be going after, you know, we're talking about taking the pesticides out, but if it was in there. The district should be going after this right now, it's in the policy, but that we might not even tackle for 10 or more years. So that was sort of the genesis around.
Well, it makes me think that, that we've had kids come multiple times and talk to us about plastic utensils in their cafeterias, which are important and we shouldn't have. And yet, when we, you know, started in this policy and we were hearing from staff, you know, the biggest sources of pollution from PPS are in our water usage and in our transportation. And we can spend a lot of time and energy on forks, which would be a very visible thing that kids would see. But if we really want to make a significant impact, we need to talk about our transportation. So I think that's, that's, that's a little like my analogy when I think about that.
Yeah.
So Dan, I just, just on that point, because after our discussion this morning, we're back in the policy. Um, because I think it's a really legitimate issues and what Danny is like, what, what's the highest impact? That the fourth, fourth paragraph of the policy does say, the district shall prioritize investments. And this is, was something that's been worked through, that achieve the greatest emissions reduction. While integrating climate action into our curriculum, developing a culture of environmental stewardship and climate justice through our organization. Other efforts which have a lower impact on emissions and require major changes in infrastructure can, can be implemented over a longer term. Do you not, does that um not provide the longer timeframe or is?
I see, uh, sorry.
Because I thought that, that seemed, and I wasn't involved in the drafting, just that it seemed like that was to get after the, there's this whole right, there's, there's a lot of stuff that can be done. And we're going to have to do a lot of things. Um, but this is about emissions. And what are the things that have the highest priorities? It doesn't mean these other things aren't important or because of technology or changes. The things that seem unimportant today are game changers, you know, later. And so I thought that left enough flexibility, but that, that's not the case?
I think, you know, I'm happy that any of the staff can come through here. Uh, I think that language staff very much likes and supports. I think the question is, if you have something about plastic forks, what's the value of having it in the policy if it's not, if it's not a high return on investment? If, if so, does that mean that staff needs to tackle that right away regardless? Or is it just something that is ignored until we?
Well, I think it says other efforts which have a lower impact on emissions, so after scope one and two. Um, and, you know, having done a lot of work in the sustainability state, that while it may seem like single-use item. Like, hey, this, you know, it's really the tip that's coming out of that tailpipe that's causing things. Uh, but the creation of disposable products actually uses a lot of energy. Um, and we may decide like, hey, we've squeezed everything we can out of our building footprint, everything we can out of transportation. And this is another thing like, or there's some new thing that you don't have to use plastic, which is high in there, you know, energy. And there, there actually is a climate footprint um to the production of single-use items. But there's something new that doesn't require any energy and so like, hey, we're going to go after that because actually it's the right thing to do.
I, I think that's for me why the policy should be high level and, and remove those more specific things. Because then we don't have to concern about there being any potential conflict and this idea of, again, creating a document that is lasting. I mean, I'm hopeful that, you know, we hit the goal before 2040 and then we can rewrite this policy to be even more progressive as we continue to, you know. But that we doesn't include me, right? Um, and so how do we create something that is long-lasting?
Yeah, which I think last time we did go through and have the discussion about, basically, we got rid of forks and said.
Forks are just my example because those children who come speak are the best, like they're so passionate and I like their leadership.
We did try to, we tried to up, we did try to up-level it. Like, for example, we got rid of the specific examples around like standardized bins. It's like, yes, we think that's probably a good idea, you know, that's kind of a basic recycling thing, but that could be in the lower level. Um, which maybe gets me back to the, like, climate versus a sustainability policy and you have two things that are complementary.
I think the challenge, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think the challenge there is, like, our hope for the administrative directive is it has our baseline data, so it can be specific about the degree of goals. And so I, I think when you see the, the, the staff recommendation of saying this might move to the AD or the implementation plan. And it's, and it's a sample and we, you know, it's not fully baked, we didn't want to do something, I mean, and just pop it out in front of the room. It was the idea with to have a discussion about it is that, yes, the intent or, or moving away from single-use, yes, that will be there. But the language around that might be really different once we have that data. That is really low impact and something that we, that are, you know, we're going to get our third-party experts in here to say, I wouldn't tackle. Uh, addressing your, your Browns equipment for 15 years. What's the value of having that language in a policy if it's something that we're not even going to look at for a decade or so? And we just don't know that yet. So the idea was keep the policy high level, really go after those high impactful things, these are the things that move the needle. And the language around, hey, do you want to get those other things too? Yes, you have a longer runway for those things, eventually get to those things, but I'm not going to see that implementation plan for 15 years. That's, you know, kind of figure it out, Liz or Erin or, or anyone else.
May I, may I jump in? Um, I wanted to just correct, I think that our operations, the two highest um, are, are, have climate impacts or carbon impacts are, are buildings and our transportation.
Yes, it's building, transportation.
Pardon me?
Building, energy use and transportation.
Right, those, those are typically the, the top, you know, the, the top in any operations. And not necessarily the disposable fork, but if we add a life cycle analysis, we can look at the embedded energy in producing a fork. And also look at the end of life of the fork. And so the, that cost benefit analysis has to do with looking at the entire life cycle of a thing. And, and that would have some impacts on our operations as well. I didn't see that language used anywhere, but as long as we're starting with a baseline greenhouse gas inventory, um, a scope one and scope two inventory. Um, we might also look at um life cycle analysis in terms of looking at where um, where we can. Um, become more sustainable, where we can, it might help us determine whether we should focus on the fork or the milk machine or we focus in, in, in different areas. And, and it, that life cycle analysis also includes a financial um or carbon impact as well. So in other words, when we say return on investment with climate work, it's not necessarily a dollar and it's, it's a dollar investment, what's the greatest impact? It's not a straight, you know, classical return on investments and it's a return on, it's, it's making, assuring that our financial investments get the, get to the greatest impacts.
It's a, it's a great point, Director DePass, which is what I was trying to get at with the, 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 the amount of energy that was used is, I mean, PPS, there's a lot of stuff that's consumed. Um, and the production of that um is, you know, creates emissions. And so while we may have something arrive, it's like, that's just a box of, like, the consumer product. That what went into it, um, we consume a lot of, I mean, as PPS is a big consumer of products. And in Europe, they are totally, the EU is totally moving in this direction of doing life cycle analysis of all the products. And having a bunch of consumer products um that listed on products so people can see like, hey, this is a, you know, like. I'm, you know, I'm driving my electrical vehicle, but I'm buying something and then you look at it, it's like, well, yeah, and you're, this product that you purchased actually has a huge carbon footprint. That most people don't think about it because they're not, you know, you don't see emissions coming out of it. So, um, hopefully that'll come out of scope two. In terms, did you, keep going, Dan.
Uh, yeah, I have a couple more. Um, this is just again, I think I've already kind of pointed on that. I want to touch on the student and community engagement, uh, because I, I know it's noted that, well, we sent out a, a previous draft. True, one was a recent one, probably in 20s, uh, and we got, you know, we got feedback on that. And now if we change it, you know, is that being disingenuous to that engagement process? And, and our perspective, and I don't want to put words into those mouses, uh, no. The feedback that we largely got that it was in alignment with the intent and the scope of the policy was. Most of the feedback was high level, certainly some people got into a lot of details and forks and other things, but most of it was high level. It was interested about reducing, you know, greenhouse gas emissions at like the 2040 target. And, and most people were writing feedback, our experts on, on policy language and what language goes in a policy, whether it's in the policy or it's in the AD or it's in something else. I think that wasn't what they were commenting on so much as we want the district to move forward on these actions. So we, we think, but, you know, simplifying the policy, knowing that we have these additional steps and we're going into greenhouse gas analysis, which will inform our next steps. We think that is in keeping largely with what we heard from our media processes. And then I think this is just a last one.
Just on, on that, Dan, since she's here, um, my recollection um of the feedback was like, also, there was a prompt around, it was like more personal. And that's where we got a lot of the, hey, we feel especially vulnerable, like some, some um parts of, some Portlanders are going to feel climate more than others. And what I read and what I heard from the feedback was a sense like, hey, PPS, what is your plan to help those um. You know, the, the people who are most vulnerable to, to climate change. And so that's, that's how we got there, some language in there. And I would be interested in, and we talked a little bit last time about, this is PPS's mission to do disaster planning. Or, you know, all the energy efficiency or, you know, plant trees all over, you know, places in the city where there, there aren't trees. But like, we'd be more involved in like supporting a jurisdictional effort. And so it seems to, to capture that, there, there could be still some high, high level way to capture that. Versus like, hey, we're going to get to that later. And so that's what I want to hold on to because, um, I think, yes, they were like directing it the right way. But it seemed like there was a sense of vulnerability to what's going to happen and what is PPS doing about it? So maybe the language that is currently in the draft is, needs to be different. Or maybe she, she should say like, hey, we don't have to have anything in the policy recognizing that because they were aligned with um. Where we're, we're heading and I think heading, the other thing they clearly said was 2040, not 2050, which you're making another adjustment. So I'm curious, but you're, you're thinking about that.
Yes, um, so I appreciate the question. Um, I think, uh, from my perspective and sort of gathering um input from, from folks and stakeholders or conferences. That is, is simply just meant to be to inform this kind of sense-making process here. I think that there's uh this uh space where folks definitely agree that uh the, the role that we take um is, is important. But there isn't necessarily, I think there is a, uh, though, just getting specific about, about who's, who's doing what. Might not necessarily be um the goal or focus, but the, we sort of, for example, I was at one yesterday. And folks are talking about, you know, you know, PPS and, you know, all these other agencies, right? And how we might interact. Um, and so I think that feels, um, like the spirit really is, is, is not necessarily. This, this, the, this operational piece of uh how jurisdictionally, you know, folks will, will interact in a climate event, I'm not sure. Um, has to be here. I think um that that is still something that um we are going to address. And there has been a glossary or, or a supervision into the policy to sort of um be clear about. Um, what, what the rule sort of shift looks like. But um, I think um the intent of the, the policy and, and the action is, is necessarily things that will, will change. And, and sort of that, that piece of, of how it will happen and the jurisdictional kind of breakdown, I think. Um, may also kind of depend greatly on context and, and the climate events and, and things of that nature. So I don't want to say too much because I do think the, this piece um isn't necessarily um something, um. Or I guess what I'm trying to say is I, I think that, that the space here that to work through that makes, makes, makes value and it makes sense. And, and that the, the engagement piece, I, I don't think needs to make an impact on, uh, on, on that change just based off of the um. The goal of, of where, of what policy says. And, and I think, um, I would just echo what Dan, you know, all of shared is that the, a good deal of the feedback was really. A reaffirming the direction you're going in and, and really wanting to um make sure that, you know, PPS is committing to these actions. And, and um had a general sense of agreement. And then there were folks who had feedback on some of the goals, like wanting a 2040 climate emissions. Um, they're focusing on the net zero goals by 2040. And, and things, and things like that.
Um, thank you, that's helpful for me. Do you think, um, when I look through here, um, I mean, one of the things, for example, when we did the um building namings policy. There was a, um, at the very end, we front-loaded a, um. We decided to put up very upfront, like, uh, an acknowledgement of like who, um, who's impacted by some of our, our names. And um, once it was there, it's like, oh, this went from like a policy that just seems, um. It, it gave more like, why are we, why are we doing these things? Um, so maybe we need some, just think now, maybe we need some sort of value statement about, an acknowledgement of who climate impact is?
Yeah, I mean, if I, if I may, Chair, uh, I think that's actually right, I mean, a preamble that articulates our values. Um, and what I hope is slurring clear here is that Portland Public Schools and its senior leadership and its higher leadership. Um, and all these, our board is committed to addressing climate. and the Office of our Board is committed to addressing climate change. So I think that that would be a powerful reminder that policy has daily impacts on our lives. And so I would be happy to help private and I would love to work with so much students as well.
I was gonna say, because there's a problem. Obviously, some communities or some Portlanders are going to be more impacted by climate than others. But the other huge group that's going to be more impacted is our students. And to me, like, in some ways, I say, it's kind of thinking about policy is like, like, why are we doing all this work? It's not just like to hit a certain goal. But it's like keeping front and center, like, why would, why would we do this? And, you know, I think about some of the things that the Fund for Portland Schools did in the middle of COVID. And it's like, certainly things is not the district's mission. But and the district did things that wasn't necessarily the district's mission, but we had vulnerable students and families that needed support and the district did it. So that would be great. Danny and Jackson, you guys up for co-drafting a preamble with?
Yeah.
Um, may I offer a little bit of context about the year 2040 for for anybody that doesn't know? Um, and and by the way, Dan, I thought that your response on your, on your, on the memo, staff memo about why we, why we would say 2040 or 2050 or 2060 or 2030. 2040 is the year that the US is going to have a majority minority population. So that 2040 goal or that 2040 year is used in climate circles and climate language because that is a big year. It's a significant year um, in terms of our our population triangle. So it it also, at the time, you know, people started using 2040, it was like 30 years away still. So it seemed like it was off in the distance. It's getting, we're closing in on that. But there's a lot of significance about that date. And I just, I wanted to share that because I think it's important. It's important to know, you know, operationally also what we can accomplish, but the 2040 is very intentional because that's a, that's a big that's a big demographic shift for us in this country.
That sounds like potential preamble.
I'm happy to also just if you wanted to, there's, if you type in 202040, you know, USA Census and people of color, you'll come up with some statistics, you know, probably from the American Community Surveys and and other census data that that talk about why that's a significant uh, year.
Great. Thank you, Director DePass.
And going back to um, like communities that are most vulnerable wanting to wanting to be able to express that. Um, kind of like going back to like, you know, the kids talking about forks. Sometimes there is, you know, a lot of like need, you know, forks may not be the most important thing. Um, but I think a, you know, focus could rather be, you know, when a kid talks about, you know, forks, they're investing in climate change. Do they have all the tools? You know, are forks going to end climate change? No. So I, I think giving and learning to, for our students to have the tools to be able to be climate leaders, not only while in school, but also outside of school and to transfer onto them. Um, you know, there was a I think it was a tweet that you, Jonathan posted around, um, it was PPS got recognition for our green schools. And I thought that was really great, but um, my only problem with it was that, right, you know, through the articles, most of those students were coming, becoming climate leaders inside of schools. They were kind of becoming climate leaders outside of school. They were becoming climate leaders outside with our community partnerships. So I want, I want us to be able to build community leaders because I often hear from our students when I, you know, because I we're working organizations, we're climate organizations, that they're coming outside there, oh, we don't have the tools, we don't have the skills. And I think that it's all to a detriment almost that our students are having to look outside. So I think that a really good thing is to give our students the tools and also so they're not having to look, you know, outside outside of our schools and go do that. And so, you know, maybe their focus was shut away from ports. Instead, you know, more impactful things that affect our community because, you know, well, 2040 is a great goal. We're going to be need, you know, future school board members and policymakers to be able to get there.
And I think that's why when I first spoke, I said that that student education piece and student leadership follow-up piece that are, that are in this policy are vital and important for me. To stay in the policy and to be robust. Because I think that's me just completely asking.
Jackson, just come on.
Nothing. If I may, I just burp on the cage. I just appreciate what you said. I mean, it reminded me, you were talking, what is and I think it goes back to this piece around community engagement. I often think about, you know, and I've said this in many meetings publicly, I often think about my parents who are immigrants to this country. And, you know, they, they took on environmental sustainability is that they knew how to, right? They didn't have a language, they didn't have the the expertise, they didn't know the word policy and what a policy is. They knew that, you know, doing their part doing their part to recycle or their part to 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 go green, you know, they're doing their part. And so I think, I think it's a reminder that that our communities are multifaceted and like, think about or how that language is 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 complex, right? And I think, I think it's just a powerful reminder that like we're, there's a spirit of what we need to listen to of our students and our community and then take on the role that that we've been, we've been as students, fortunate as students.
Hold on. So I'm curious about this slide. Um, and this is sort of the, um, one of the sort of ongoing challenges is development and oversight of policy. So we develop a policy and then it goes into now a virtual, it's no big, big binder anymore. It goes into the virtual world. And like the oversight, so because I'm not, I'm not seeing that, like some sort of mechanism aside like, hey, Dan, are you following the policy? And I was also thinking about when you had that slide that had like the board education, like the the reporting piece. So reporting isn't necessarily oversight. I mean, you know, I think today, this big story in the front page that we're going in about electrification and how states not meeting its goals is kind of like, oh. So now like, what, what is the, what are the state leaders doing about that? So I would be interested, both to hear from committee members, not necessar, I mean, I don't think we have to decide this now, but like what what that looks like. Um, if if that's the role, like the development and then sort of the oversight and and then there's the also the committee reporting to us, but you know, it could I think if we're, you're not, if you don't have a discussion about it, then it becomes like, hey, we'll try and work on like board agendas at some point, you know, next year or something. And so you know, is there more of a, you know, at a miles, at milestones or like at specific points, like still on track so that, you know, I'm not calling you in 2039 and like, hey, you know, just have to policy and did you follow it?
We love the ladies.
So I, I think that topic needs a little more development. Um, because if you do go to high, then it's what does that look like at a council? And I don't know if you have specific ideas, you can have them now, but I think to me, that's a
Yeah, um, I'll say, I don't have necessarily specific ideas where I I think we can work on this is to go back to the deliverables and the detail that's going to happen. And as, and as we get our baseline data and we get the information about what those return investments and what those mid-range markers are, we want to have our our emissions or our EUI, or we want to have electricity, solar generation be X by year. You know, we start to see those, that additional level of detail, and that becomes what we measure against. I think what the recording is. And so that information is still needed to to create those emission targets. Um, but you're right, there also needs to be that discussion of like, okay, create those targets, show me that plan, how do you get there? How are you, you know, we're going to create a target for, you know, we'll say in trouble, can, but you know, about solar generation or about, you know, how we size our panels and those things going forward, those details are there. That's, that wasn't the incremental steps that get us there, but it's like, we want to see those targets. So every year, we can know that you're on track or you're not on track. Or, you know, the thing I think of is, this is going to need a lot of resources. So staff is going to have to come forward and say, here's what our targets are. We've broken, broken down those 20-year target into these little pieces. If we want to hit next year, the year after that, we need these resources and we need the board to support that. Or if we have a general obligation bond, here's the big capital fund that we're going to need, those need to be prioritized in the bond. So I think it's there, but you're, but you're right. I think it needs to be worked out of how, what is the language so everyone's comfortable with that section.
And then on with oversight and accountability, um, are there any mechanisms not just like hold us accountable to the district, but also hold us accountable to the community? Because oftentimes, you know, it'll be like the, oftentimes the update will come like a year later or two years later and the community is like, we would have liked to know about this, not just um, so that we kind of help their keeping accountable, but we kind of helped as well, or we kind of invested in this as well.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great point. And my, my initial thought to that is that's something that gets embedded in charter where you can go and make sure that students in the community are engaged as well and informed as well. Maybe not, that's kind of because that's, that's another piece that we need to come out with, is creating that charter.
Tell me a little bit more about, just, I mean, about, um, how would it look to be like, how how would it look for us to put ourselves accountable, like as a PPS?
Um, you know, I don't know, like, I don't, I don't, I don't, I'll be honest, I don't have that answer exactly. You know, sometimes um, we'll be doing like, um, we'll do on campaigns, we have, you know, they are major donors. And then we will have, right, you know, the goal markets, right? You know, we will invest in our, these candidates, we'll invest in this idea. And we promise to get you there, but whoa, you're going to fundraise to this amount of money and we're going to get this. And so we post how much you either fundraising or we have to to the public to see how much you're fundraising. So that we're not, then the community knows that we're not fundraising and we're not, or we're not meeting our goals. Now, it doesn't have to be money, no, but it can be, you know, from year 2020 to year 2025. This is what we've done. This is what we need to do. And this is, you know, what the community can help with.
So let me see, I can, I think this is the type of conversation we should have. So for example, Dan does the, we put the money in the budget for the scope one and scope two. Scope one, one and two happens in like the fall and in the early winter. And out of that, it's like, we're going to set a target on electrification of our and, you know, here's what we think we can do. And then it's making those targets visible. And then like Dan and team, how did we do, you know, how are we doing on that target? And like, hey, we're behind. So what does that mean for us hitting our overall target? Or we're ahead. And, you know, should we be, you know, doubling down on our investment or, you know, so is that what you're you mean, having like very specific conversations about targets? Like, and having it visible to the broader community?
Yeah, I think, I mean, like targets visible to the broader community because um, I think, you know, there's a, once you kind of like the information out there, um, then the community can also track it because a lot of times, you know, it's not being tracked until either it didn't complete or it was completed in past months later. And so there's not that gap between community and the district.
I think what Dan had on the slides about, you know, how we're going to do the policy and then this greenhouse gas emissions sort of plan and then create those implementation strategies. And that's the perfect place to have those targets. Once we really know where do we stand and what are the best strategies moving forward to, to I can see us doing like a big fanfare with the implementation plan, doing like a big public thing of like, here's the target implementation plan, here's where we're going. And then to have that committee come back, where they're going to report on, here are these targets we've set with our implementation plan, here's how they're they're um, being met and then how we're adapting. So I, I think that's great. And I love that, you know, I think this is science, right? It's climate science and that we're, we're doing this study and not just writing some targets in a policy, but really doing the scientific operational work to make sure we have goals that that both we can meet, but also that stretch us so that we I mean, this is real, like this is, this is, this is vital, this climate set. And so to do it properly really, really matters. And so I love, I love that idea.
What I could say, you know, as, as the, as curators know, a number of years ago, we brought on a lead on our justice and, you know, this lead for climate justice will, will really be anchoring the school districts, conservative efforts around climate justice, climate change. And so uh, whether it's the education of of the piece or the, this policy, you know, making sure that that we are transparent and accountable to it. I think that is really important. Just similar to the goals that, um, that the school board has about student achievement, right? Those are really out there in public. Uh, as, as, as board members know, that's happening, we're voting to be that next week. And so, and we'll do that on a, on a, a regular basis. So similar here with the CCR committee, you know, and and the Board of Education creating that and creating, you know, online, you know, public information that allows that transparency. And frankly, you know, as, as, as the board has indicated over the years, Portland Public Schools will be the leading school district in the country when it comes to climate change. That is going to be a fact. And in order to do that, we need to show what we're giving, right? We need to be public about this. So, so we look forward to being transparent and working with our community.
Also means all eyes on the night.
All eyes on the night.
Who's in charge of climate justice?
We are in a hiring process right now, so we hope to announce publicly this month.
Um, is the previous or something? Um, is now principal?
Correct.
Going to remain a principal?
At land.
Correct. She is the permanent principal at land.
And well, and she was phenomenal in that climate role and is phenomenal at land.
Obviously now multi-challenger. Dan, I, so I I think more thought needs to be potentially language drafted around this, this piece. The other thing, I'm wondering if you want to talk about the sample administrative directive. I said, I think there's a conversation that needs to happen with the superintendent. Again, that's not the words prerogative, but I also and if and because of that, we need to be careful not to speak for the superintendent. In which case, it's superintendent, staff and the whole institution, because that's not our, our role. And if we are going to be saying, you know, this is a great idea. We've got it currently in the policy draft. Staff says they're going to move it into the administrative directive. I think because policymaking for a lot of people is like, um, it's, it's not just something they do, it's not what they do for a living or, so it may not be intuitive, like, hey, I thought that was going to be here. Or we just, we, so we need to just be really clear about whose role is who and what it means. So
And following Dan's presentation, I think we should be really careful about saying this is going to end up in the AD. I think there may be things that we need to remove from the policy because it doesn't belong in policy that are things that we, we want to consider when we're asking the superintendent to consider when creating the AD, but I think it's really important that we make sure that we're we're using those high level things in the policy as the things that guide our decision-making on the specifics. as the things that guide our decision-making on the specifics.
So it's a good point, but what I'm, what I'm referencing is this is like staff wrote it will be in the AD. Not, not me saying it should be in the AD. So if it's not going to be, it just needs to be, we need to make sure that our, like, people who have worked on this or provided input, that, yeah. The only person who can say what's it going to be in the AD is superintendent staff. And that, that's why when I read it, it was like, okay, this is staff saying, I'll be having to contend up my assumption, this is going to be in the AD. It's like, okay, well, that makes me think about it a little bit differently. But I think we just need clarity on that.
And I think, you know, the folks, Mike, you and your team that worked on this climate policy have done such an incredible job of, of really doing a deep dive and adapting. And I know.
Then why are you gutting?
Shouldn't you guys work on?
And why aren't you listening to the public comment?
You have public comment later on and you can speak back.
It's a waste of time. All you're doing is swirling around the dream.
Mike, can you wait till the public comment section?
I think I'm done.
Please go ahead.
Well, what I was going to say is I think, you know, I think one of the things when it comes to policy is we have community members who have very specific ideas about what the district should do. And, and I think, you know, have some thoughts on what the implementation should be and are very passionate about that. And I think that the, the overall goals are belong in policy and that implementation is what belongs in the hands of the operation side. And that the work that's been done and all the effort into the idea creation of specific things is good and helpful and will inform the next steps. And I know that it's hard to hear that we're going to stay with the high-level pieces and not have all those hands-on folk pieces. And it feels like a loss to you. But I think what we've heard from folks and the comments we've gotten is this direction forward of creating a climate justice policy that really does. I mean, I think everyone's goal, we shouldn't be fighting about the specifics and whether it's in the AD or the climate justice policy. We should be focused on is PPS, then it'd be carbon neutral by 2040. We need to keep the main thing, the main thing. And Mike, I know that your group has done a lot of work and, and you feel like this is not honoring that work you've done.
I would just ask that, they're going to keep a community discussion, so address us.
Yeah, so I feel like the, the group has done its work. And it's, it's, for this conversation, it's encouraged us to do this. And the ultimate goal will be a PPS that is moving on climate justice. And that's what I'm very stressed.
So for current participation, what are we suggesting that, sorry?
So, and this is future discussion, I think we. My mom. Sorry. Where are we? So there is a version of document where the Sunday before the last committee meeting that suggested that if you had a color printer, there's green, yellow and blue. And green would be, so on this document, it's all black. And then the yellow is things, well, the red are things that they would just take, that staff is suggesting removing. And then the yellow, or it's actually blue in version, is, are things that staff, that says would be moved from policy into AD or implementation. And as you see, it's, I mean, it's a lot of the policy, a lot of the current draft policy. So that's, that's what we're discussing. And I say, so for me, there's some things that are in this other policy that it, that's a fine place for them. I mean, they, they live somewhere else, as long as they continue to live there. And the question is, then, then for me, the question is, are some of these things, and since you've developed policy before, you know, like, should these, some of these things in yellow or in the document, remain in policy because they are high-level? Like the example I gave about the support development leaders of engagement opportunities from climate solutions? Should that stay in the policy since it's high-level? Or are there things that we agree is way more operational and implementation? And that would be, again, it's clarity from the superintendent saying, yes, it's going to go in the, in AD of implementation plan. So that's, that's just a conversation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, my, my, what my thought process is, is that we are not keeping this in the policy, stuff like, you know, engaging students and stuff like that. I, is, right, when, is it just, then it starts to become just a net zero policy versus a climate justice policy? So will, are we going to be, right, because, because climate justice itself, right? There's multiple of the things. If we start to remove it, then it starts, it starts to just become a net zero policy versus a climate justice policy. And then my, my only thought process is I, I, I feel like that maybe allows to the community.
And also that, that's not the intent, is to, to keep the climate justice policy and keep the, the three primary pillars. It's just that they do, and some of that work to say, what's that right level content and right level detail? But it's definitely not to just turn this into a net zero policy, even though that's a pertinent topic of today. But I think that's where, that's where most of the detail and the notion is.
Director DePass, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I don't at this time.
Okay, so in terms of next steps, I've got a preamble, potentially, that hopefully will address some of the community comment we had before. We're going to have a discussion with the superintendent about the lines on the AD versus the policy. There is some additional work around definitions and around just some of the, some of the wordings, there's a couple of things that were lost. And then also a crosswalk, the other thing that needs to be done is like a crosswalk between the environmentally sustainable business practices and the draft and what things exist elsewhere. Is that?
Makes sense.
Any other next steps?
I think just to note that the next meeting is only two weeks away, seven, three, so it's a hustle.
Yeah, and I think I've had conversations with a lot of the board members that we're going to work at this, right? I say, just, just because input came in at, you know, a later stage in the process, that doesn't, we, we need to, we need to work through it. And swallowing a big hairball. We need to get this right. Yeah, so I, I appreciate everybody's thinking about it. And I think, I think there's still like some pretty big policy questions. I can say, I, I don't necessarily agree with all the things like these, these are detailed versus these are high-level. I could be like, they're high-level, but they're in another policy. So I want to, I want to go through each one of them. And also think about that accountability and oversight piece because that's, if we're, if we're going to spend a lot of time writing a policy, then we also need to ensure that we have some way that we're tracking it and also being completely transparent. But, I mean, I know students are going to hold us accountable. And we need to set it up so that people know what we're doing and if we have missed. Anything else for this topic? And then I'll move to the public comment and then we have one last agenda item. Spreadshaw, you have a public comment?
We do. Next one here is virtually. Dan Kitrick?
Are they in queue?
They, they should be, they are in, as panelists, Shannon, I think you can hear me, but I'm trying to hear your phone.
Yes, I could hear you now. Can you see me? Let's see, start video, there we go. Hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. My name is Shannon Kitrick and my pronouns are she and her. I am the climate justice and climate change teacher at Roosevelt. You might have seen a video that my students made, made about the climate change response plan. And we're preparing a new video for you right now. So I'm just here today to speak a little bit for my students and myself. I could tell you that my students are really proud of PPS because this is an ambitious plan. And we, we, we're feeling a lot of pride. And I think what my students have been saying is that they want climate solutions, right? This is a solutions-based class. So what we're doing is modeling good solutions for climate change. And we want to do that in every single thing that we do, right? Down from purchasing and even cutlery, because we're looking at the, the energy consumption from cutlery. We're looking at, and it directly ties to the throwaway culture. My students want to live sustainability. They want PPS to be a model. So I thank you for giving us these solutions because this is the solution that we are working for. Students, we see now that they've been taking matters into their own hands. They've been walking out over climate change. And just so people listen, and you've listened, thank you so much. Because the way we see it is we see this policy as not just a model for the United States, but you will model for the entire world how to make schools basically reduce their climate impacts. My students are learning about, you know, climate refugees in the United States. They're scared. They are looking at forest fire season in Portland. And they want to see real meaningful change. And I think the community input has been very clear. We want the specifics because what we want is more accountability. I have been teaching for 21 years, 10 years in Portland Public School. I am so sad to say that in order for me to model sustainability as the climate change and climate justice class, that I need to bring my own recycling out of the building once a month. I have a little cart that I pull my little green, my, my, my blue bin of recycling. Things like recycling should be something that's given. Each classroom should have a recycling bin for paper, plastic and aluminum, and they should be placed right next to each other. My students want to actually go and do a story of, basically a story of the stuff and, and see where, where, where our waste is going. Because we notice that we're not basically doing all we can. But with this policy, you're doing all you can. We will make long and lasting change and we have 19 years to do it. I'm not going to talk too much longer because I'm actually losing my voice. But I do want to say that by, that my students are going to send you another video because we are scared that we had this ambitious policy and we're going to say things like reusable cutlery is, belongs somewhere else. It belongs with climate change because we know that by 2050, 10% of greenhouse gases will be from cutlery. And we want students to live sustainable and we want to see, and we want the adults to model it for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming today and that last video was awesome, so.
Thank you.
Send it over again. I can't remember who sent it through to us, but it was, it was great.
I will, we're, we're, we're making another one, but, and, and, and students, students were so proud. And I witnessed them after this, you know, basically the updates about the policy. I saw them sad and, and, and they were diminished because they felt that they had power and that they were basically making long-lasting change. And I think that's what we need to show our students and that's what we need to give them. Let's not take apart anything in this policy because the specifics are what the community said. That's what we said we wanted. And to take things like single-use plastics out of the, out of the, the mix, I don't think that's sending a good message to our students.
Great, thank, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
That completes your second public comment. So we have. Dan, I feel like, is there anything you want to say about the sample administrative directive? Before we leave climate altogether, sorry. I didn't notice it among all the other.
No, that's okay, yeah. And it was provided really as, because what happened today, exactly what we wanted was just to have a discussion. You know, it's like where we go, and so we just wanted to hear the feedback. And so that was provided just to give an idea of the level of detail that could be in administrative directive. Plus some, that is what the intent is. So I, I think we're good to move on.
Can I just add something?
Yeah, sure.
So I was one of the students that organized that kind of walkout, that kind of thing. And I just want to say that I was very grateful for PPS' response to that walkout. None of our local elected officials, commissioners and merit group have responded with adequate time for our students and heard them with value. And it was PPS and then also some of our local senators who did. So I just want to say that, that, that students appreciated a response when our, some of our local elected officials. So that is impactful, does a lot.
Great, thank you for sharing that. Really good to hear, just not just from the board, but also for staff.
Thank you for hanging over here.
Dan, you went with sustainable. But I'll have it in 20 years.
Well, they, they have it now, there's actually a recital.
Yeah, fewer staffs in here for the climate. Thank you all for, for coming. Last agenda item, but I just.
Herman's like, I'm busy.
Not yet. So in addition, the last agenda item is policies and public commentary. We have public comments, or we have, let's see, seven, no, eight. Eight policies or related rescissions in public comment. I had a conversation, just to clarify for everybody, that we continue to have these on the agenda items, even of the public comment, because if we get public comment, the natural place for us to like amend things is in committee. And that is just a good opportunity for, whether it's the community members or board members, that if people want to take an opportunity, it's like, this is between the introduction and the approval. So I would like to ask Spreadshaw or Zan, I don't know which spell, which one it is. Do, do we have any public comment on the rescissions or the policies? And then the other question I would have is, is there any board? And then the other question I would have is, is there any board? Larry?
I don't know.
Michelle?
She, she has.
She's still there or she?
She's gone.
Um, I don't know. Director, I know Director Scott was on the call as well. I don't know if he's still there.
Is he still there?
Yep, still here. Just listening.
Scott?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't have any, any, any additional comments.
Okay. So I had one thing related to the and I appreciate Director Scott, you joining us today and Director Scott Sam as, as well. And also asking, there you are in person. So nice you are hiding out. That, you know, what, what the question with the, what the process is. And it doesn't mean we can't amend things during board meetings, but we do have an opportunity all the time to supply for staff. And it's also a coordination piece with the board office that we always have all the policies, you know, that are in public comment posted so that if anybody wants to see them or commented on them, that they, they can. And just to, you know, elicit, you know, feedback from, from others or just discussion. And so that'll just be our general, our general practice. And sometimes it works with the between the committee meetings and the board meetings. They don't always it does, it's not always synced up, but most of the time it is that we have an opportunity that there's an intervening committee meeting that we can review, or we could ask the chair to hold back on a second reading if we have a meeting coming up and we have substantial public comment. So I really appreciate you asking that question, Director Scott, and if it would be helpful. I'm going to ask you if you think for me to put kind of my explanation in some sort of document so that it's transparent or to others as well about what our process is and how to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I appreciated the explanation. I guess the only thing I, I would say is I think I, I think if there's a substantive conversation at, at the board meeting for the first reading, I think it would be good if the committee then at, at the intervening, you know, meeting, as you mentioned, then took up that, that conversation. I, I mean, I, and I guess maybe that's where there's still a little bit of lack of clarity. You know, if a board member raises an issue at a first meeting, do they also need to either come to the policy committee meeting or, 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 or write it down and, and send it to, to the chair and the committee members in order for it to be discussed? Or, or is that mention at, at the public meeting, you know, the first meeting, which is a public board meeting, sufficient to then sort of get it on the table for, as, as, as an official comment? I mean, that would be the only source of clarity.
It's a, it's a great, a good question. Because it's always sometimes, you know, I'm, I do this. Sometimes something's coming out of committee and I make a comment. And it's just a comment. And I, I don't feel strongly enough that I'm gonna like engage or come to the meeting or do something else. It's like, huh, I have a different take on that. And so I guess my sort of lesson learned as a committee chair is in the future, if somebody raises something, like to do a temperature check, like, hey, was that just a, a comment? Or, you know, do you have something specifically you want to propose? And so, you know, like I say, I take that to heart that that's a better practice. As I say, because we have seven opinionated peoples, there's a lot of things that are put out there. And so it's a good point. And I'm, I'm happy to try and put something together that sort of shares the process. Because in some ways, because this is the world I live in, in my other life, that it's all in my brain and I don't necessarily you know, we, we operate different than other policymaking bodies and not we just should, to be clear, just like this election process.
Yeah. And that, that clarification is really, that clarification is really helpful. And I think as long as, as long as the seven board members know that process, then I think we're all set. So thank you for that.
Okay. So I, the, the vacation policy, which is out for first reading, it will have its first reading and now in a second. I, I, I don't agree with the amendment that was added. I've asked for some information from staff. I don't have language that I'm going to offer. I, but I am interested in the language as part of the bigger, sort of a bigger topic. And which means I probably will just vote against the, the policy. Because I don't have language. Otherwise, I would have posted it and brought it, brought it forward. But I thought a lot about it. And again, and sort of the conversation that happened at the board. And one of those conversations was, was around like what other entities do. And other large entities, so it's a billion dollar entity, most other large governmental entities have like elected auditors. So there is this backstop that like, hey, the auditor is going to go look at something. I mean, if, if it seems like there is something up, you know, that needs to be reviewed or, you know, certainly as volunteers, like you don't have the capacity to provide the same level of oversight. And so, you know, I'm thinking, we don't have that. We have two internal auditors who, you know, frankly, they just, they had a limited capacity and they have an audit plan and that's what they, they added. And in this particular case, so as I was looking at the non-represented staff and benefits and the original policy and like, you know, where we are with it and you know, thinking about, so I had my conversation that I think all of us are having with the auditor around the next year's audit plan. And so for me, it's like, hey, I'd like to have this audited. Because I, I think, well, I can have.
You can have your own opinion. I just disagree. But yeah, that's.
Yeah, well, so let me.
I just was sorry.
Okay. So it's not a good idea because the auditor is a non-represented employee. So it can't happen.
Oh, yeah.
So what my thinking is though, that in some way we're, we're different and that we're a volunteer board and we don't also have that other third party piece. And I am thinking about like what, like what that means. And so I'm only raising this because I want to be transparent that I'm, I'm concerned that we're removing a layer of oversight and we don't have some other mechanisms that other large jurisdictions and frankly, we, you know, most, most of us have jobs. And, and it's not our core competency anyway. And so, you know, just thinking about like, how, how does that happen then? And I haven't landed on something, but I just want to share like what I've been, been thinking. And I say, I thought about like, well, you know, this could be a topic of the internal auditor, but it, but it can't be because of that comment. So I'm, you know, I have some conversations with some of the people thinking about thinking through it. But I am concerned about our oversight. And this, that's not, I don't want to say I'm implying that anybody's not concerned. We have, we have different levels of we all have different perspectives. And from my perspective, it's just one thing that I, from my history, am concerned that we are, I'll say, on the vacation policy, losing a piece of the oversight. So just want to share my thinking. I'm not proposing any language, although Director Scott, you might want to propose a small amendment to your, your language because you have you still have language in here that says once approved. Not a perfect thing that I might vote against, but.
No, but that's what we do, right?
But you have in the second paragraph, it says once approved. And I think that's a holdover from where we were going to approve it. And then you also have the word, word also in the last paragraph, and I think you want to drop that also.
So Julia, are you talking about, are you talking about the audit and the oversight vacation policy? Are you thinking about proposing additional language to the current policy?
Awesome. Can we finish this?
Yeah.
Because I.
Yeah. So I, no, I, I'm sorry. I appreciate those, the, that, you know, I, I, I read the, and I, I guess I would defer to Liz and staff. I read that third paragraph, once approved, meaning once approved by the superintendent. So the superintendent shall develop a vacation policy applicable to non-represented employees. And then, you know, and then, yeah, it's sort of once approved by the superintendent. The schedule should be posted, but I, I, I don't, we could certainly amend that.
The superintendent's developing it, so I don't know that he can presume, but it, when you take out to be approved by the Board of Education, that, that approval is going to.
Yeah.
I, I just think so makes it cleaner. And then I'd also drop the also in third. And if, if you want to offer those as an amendment, or we can just leave it as it is.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I guess, I guess that's right. Since we're in policy committee, I guess, I guess you all could, could make that change. Although if we make that change, does it get posted again for first read? How does, how does this?
I don't think that's a material change.
Okay. Um, yeah, no, I think if, if, I guess I would ask as, as a non-committee member, if, if the committee wanted to, to take up those two sort of administrative changes, I, to make it cleaner, that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, those are just extraneous errors really that from the amendment that was made on the fly of the day. So that's fine with me.
I'm fine with that. As long as it doesn't add, send us back to the drawing board, like we gotta wait another.
No, no. So it will just delete once approved. So it'll just say the schedule will be posted on the district website. And then the board shall approve by resolution the addition of many paid holidays.
Yep.
Great. So strike the also and strike the once approved prior paragraph. Sounds good.
You're welcome.
Thanks for that.
Have you changed your mind? No, philosophically, it's removing board oversight and I don't support that. So sorry, Director, why are you getting?
I'm sorry, I'm asking, are you, as you're thinking about the, the fundamental disagreement you have with removal of oversight, are you wanting to amend this policy so that it does indeed return to oversight? Or are you trying to find another way to have the board have oversight of this?
Well, I'd actually like to get the information that I requested first. And there's some other things that.
Sorry, what, but informing your question about sort of what the vacation.
About the vacation policy. I mean, it's pretty standard. It's like, you know, just like the costs to to the district. And there's other benefits as, as well that I I think the board hasn't provided oversight and potentially not compliant with the policy. And so, you know, I'm thinking like, what, what is the role? And I say, it's for, I, I feel like with our representative employees, we have those discussions and there's, you know, everybody's got their kind, you know, post the PAT contract and we, you know, voted on, we all know what's, what's in there. And I feel like for the non-represented employees, they're, you know, the board is to be the, the, you know, the check, basically hold that accountable. It's, it's a hardest hit plate employees and it includes, all right, not they're all, because it's a diverse group. But that, that is something that we, that has created reputational and credibility risk for the district in the past. And.
So if, if I could just, and I, we could speak to this at the policy adoption when it, when it comes back to the board as well. I mean, I do, I, I would disagree with the characterization that it removes oversight. Oversight doesn't just come from voting on something. Oversight can also come from just reviewing something that, that, you know, is, is out there. And that's the whole intent of this is, this is very transparent. The superintendent adopts it. It's posted to the website. And, and certainly, you know, if a board member, you know, had an issue or a member of the public had an issue, you know, we could raise it at the time. So I, I think there's still plenty of oversight. The other thing I would add is, you know, why, why, under that scenario, would we, would we pick on just vacation policy? Right? There's, there's all HR policies, you know, have, have implications. And I think the whole reason why we, why we hire a superintendent and an HR director and administrative staff is to in fact manage those things. And, and you said it yourself, board members don't have expertise in this area. And so I, I get really concerned about board members sort of inserting, you know, their views on what, what is the appropriate vacation policy and what's not. And I think by having board approval, we're sort of saying, you know, that would imply that, that we are going to know whether non-represented employees should get four weeks or four and a half weeks or five weeks of vacation. And I just, I, I, we don't. And, and I don't think we add any value to that conversation that hasn't already been added by, 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 by the staff. The last point I would make is I really think continuing to go back to the collective bargaining agreements is, is really a false comparison. We don't approve collective bargaining agreements because they have vacation policy in them or pay policy. We approve them because, you know, because we're approving the overall agreement. And it happens at some point that those things have been added. CBAs don't require, you're not required to include vacation in a CVA. In most cases you do, because the union at some point wanted that in there. It became part of the negotiated conversation. And so the board role there is to approve a CVA, which is in fact an appropriate role. But the very specific things within it vary from contract to contract. So, so I, I, I think that's a little bit of a false comparison. So just because you made the arguments, I, 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 I want to make the counter and we could probably have the same conversation.
So I, I'm just going to say that we have all kinds of discussions where we talk about compensation, the compensation level, the POAS levels for our employees, like what hours they're working, whether they're going to get a planning day. So, you know, it's just a different, we have two different points of view. And as I was thinking about your example about Metro, I was like, well, Metro also has a public auditor that is totally independent, that, you know, is a backstop if, if needed. And so I say, that's just what I'm thinking. It's not just about vacation and it, it's about, you know, all sorts of benefits that are, are offered to our employees. And we can have, we can have two different points of view. I'm just stating, stating mine. Anybody else for the?
You want to be ordered?
I, I got to my one concern with you, Julia, that if we do you and I can look, you and I should have a conversation.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, everybody.